All right, staff ready? We'll get up to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under our individual liberties and justice.
Appreciate everybody coming out. Good to see a good crowd here. So we get the chance somebody to approve our name, please. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you Randy. Second?
Second.
Thank you James. Call in favor.
Aye.
Any announcements? Public comment, and I got a couple signed up here. Mr. Paul Shoemaker, would you step up, sir?
Thank you counsel. My name is Paul Shoemaker. My wife and I own Holly Spring Farm on Turnpike Road in Mills River. And we've been farming in Mills River for forty years. We grow a wide assortment of vegetables and have been members and vendors at the Mills River Farmers Market since it started. We've watched the market grow from only a few farmer vendors to many of them today. They're selling local produce to hundreds of Mills River residents. I got a note from Linda Britton today that we had the largest turnout ever this past Saturday. There were six hundred and fifty visitors at the market. And you can bet that ninety percent of them live in Mills River. So the market's become, I think, a very important community event. And I'm in favor of the town council approving funding to support the market. And in my way of thinking, this support would make a strong statement that the town is really serious about maintaining some degree of the rural character that Mills River has been known for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I got Mountain Butterworth? Butterworth?
Did not sign.
Well, somebody, you don't have to speak, but I got your name on the list. Somebody warned you speak, I bet.
I can say that I'm here to support the national classification as well as Mills River economy.
Okay, thank you sir. All right, so at this point, I need somebody to make us a motion to go into closed session with our attorney.
Excuse me, just may I do have one email that was sent in.
Okay, sorry.
If I could read that. I've given you a copy.
Okay.
It's from Mary Alice Church Sturer. I believe that's how you pronounce it. I've been a regular customer of the Mills River Farms, Farmers Market since the inception. Unless I'm out of town, I shop there every Saturday for fresh locally grown food. I firmly support the local market. Mills River is traditionally a farming community and it makes sense for the town of Mills River to financially support this local gem. Please vote yes to support our market.
All right, and that's the only one we had this week? Okay. We'll make sure that gets into the record. And now we'll move forward with our closed session if somebody will make us a motion.
How am I commencing that we go into closed session?
Thanks Sandra. Do you second that? Got a problem going on there.
Second.
Thank you James. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back. Let me someone make a motion for us to come back into open session.
Mayor Gonzo, I move that we move back into open session.
Thank you. Just take that for me.
I'll second.
Thanks, Sandra. All in favor? So we'll move on with an approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One correction on the minutes.
Uh huh.
Last thing.
Yep.
Any. It's on. A. The second page. They. It was the vote for. Planning board spot. So or someone has down is voting yes and no. I think the no was. For Mr. Gongs. But. Is that right? Yeah.
That's correct. Thank.
Yes. If not. Randy. Yeah, okay.
Well, then I'll I'll make a motion to. Accept the consent agenda.
Randy's second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank. All in favor? Okay, moving on, regurgitating the proclamation. Daniel, are you late this in that one or?
No, mayor, this is. A proclamation that was requested to be added to the agenda.
Okay.
And we just wanted to put it on on the regular agenda as opposed to consent so that you'd have an opportunity to read it if you wanted to.
Yes.
But this is proclaiming May as mental health awareness month. And Anderson County adopted a very similar proclamation at their first meeting in May. And I don't know if anyone here wants to speak on it, but that's what this proclamation is for.
We had one young gentleman that was here in favor, but he had to leave. Okay.
I saw you.
I did, but I knew he was right there with you, sir.
Well, Mayor Johnson, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Awesome. Does anybody have any questions about mental health awareness month?
Is this traditionally the month that other national observances?
Yes, sir. There actually are three months in the calendar that are about mental health. But it's mental health awareness. Suicide awareness. May is mental health. So.
Okay.
We appreciate the council considering this tonight. And town manager has said we have several municipalities along with. The council, the board of commissioners versus board of public education. So. We have all together seven organizations that are going to help this proclamation.
Awesome. So we're looking for a motion to. Observe this proclamation, correct?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Randy. Second.
I'll second.
Sandra, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You're not. Proclamation is in place. Thank you for all you do. All right, we need to set a public hearing for the rezoning for R twenty two dash oh one mixed use to general business with the number to pass.
Yes, sir. Mr. Malachek, would you provide just a quick update on on this process, please?
Yeah, so good evening, council members. So the town received the rezoning application on April twenty fifth. And the request is to rezone one forty Emma Sharp Road and five Penland Road from mixed use and neighborhood commercial to general business. The standard process is once it goes to the planning board for review and recommendation, staff brings it to cap to town council to set the actual public hearing date. And then the the formal review by this council would happen in that public hearing, but we just need the date set in order to do public notice requirements. So we're proposing June ninth for that public hearing.
But a. No, they wouldn't be here on June ninth for any reason. Here, no. June ninth works for me. Somebody will make us a motion. We'll move on with June the ninth.
I'll make a motion that we set the rezoning hearing, public hearing for June the ninth for R twenty two oh one.
Okay, second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor? Any opposed? You're none. Fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three budget presentation. This will be in this.
Okay, normally I would stand at the podium for this, but I've been exposed to COVID, so I'm gonna hide in the back corner over here and speak. So this evening, we're gonna run through the budget presentation for the upcoming fiscal year, which is fiscal year twenty twenty three. And I've got several slides here that will go through, and this is gonna focus a lot more on the data as opposed to the written narrative that you saw on your packets. So tonight, we're gonna run through. I want to update you on where we are at the budget. I want to go over a couple of key terms that you've probably heard, or you certainly will heard here if you haven't. We'll touch on how government works in the state in general, just for overview. Run through some accomplishments over the last year. And then we'll actually get into the numbers. So if you bear with me for a few minutes, this is. A lot of benefit for the public, just as much as it is for for council. So tonight, you're not asked to make any decisions. The only thing that we're asking of you this evening is to hear this information. Offer any feedback you might have if there's a specific concern about about an expenditure or revenue for that matter. Ask us those questions so that we can come come prepared with answers the next time we talk about this. And then talk about next steps. We can. We can do workshops. We can have the right to the public hearing. It's really the board's pleasure. So a couple of things that you're gonna hear me say this evening is a is fiscal year and the fiscal year for. North Carolina local governments is June thirtieth to July first of every year. So it's a little bit different than how you might do it at home, but. You'll hear that referred to as FY twenty twenty two or twenty and twenty twenty three, or simply FY twenty three or fiscal year twenty three. Those are all synonymous terms. The second thing that you'll hear me say is municipality, city, town, village in in North Carolina. All those are the same thing. They're they're incorporated municipalities. So you have the town of Cary, which is over a hundred thousand people. And then you have, you know, the city of Pevore, which is eight thousand people. So that it is. It means nothing essentially. Fund balance is a very common term, and put simply, that's your assets minus your liabilities, and what's left is your fund balance. The general fund is the town's operating account. The town does not have any other accounts like enterprise funds or something like that that would be associated with. Businesslike activities, think water and sewer rates. And then a penny of the tax rate. This is a common term that we use in talking with. Public budgets is one penny. That does take into account. A loss because you're never gonna collect a hundred percent of your your property tax. This is ninety eight percent of that collection rate. So briefly on the calendar, we have had several meetings already so far. We met as staff back in. In January to talk about this budget and how we wanted to develop it, and our main goal was staff was to. Continue to provide efficient services while maintaining a conservative budget. We're a small staff. We all help each other out. We all do a lot of different things outside of our traditional job descriptions. And that's what we wanted to be able to make sure we we kept moving forward was expanding services, knowing we have limited resources. So tonight, May twelfth, you're hearing the budget presentation. May twenty six is the first potential work session if the board would like to do that. And that could be at your regular meeting on the twenty sixth. It could be earlier in the evening, so you would meet earlier and just focus on the budget and then have your regular meeting. It's really the board's pleasure. June ninth is the first potential public hearing date we've identified based on notification advertisement requirements. That could also be a work session depending on where council is in the in the review process. And then July twenty third, or excuse me, June twenty third, we have public hearing and adoption. You don't have to adopt it that night if you still have questions because set a special meeting, but it has to be adopted by July first. Otherwise, you get into interim budgets, which we don't wanna. We don't wanna have to to get into. Beginning in July, the year starts over. The fiscal year starts over. That's when finance director does a lot of work internally. And then the auditor comes out in the fall, and then every fall typically in November, October, November. The town's auditor comes and presents the auditor presentation. So I'll quickly run through local government basics in North Carolina, and you might have heard the term Dylan's rule or home rule. Home rule means that the municipality or or other government agency. In the state basically can make its own rules. They don't have to have permission from the state. They don't have to be authorized by the state. Then North Carolina, where this local government is incorporated under what's called Dylan's rule, which essentially means the state. Creates municipalities and the state authorizes what municipalities can do. You can't do something that there's not authorization for. One exception, I'll get into in a moment. But by and large, because we are quote creatures of the state, the state legislature has full authority to create, expand. Abolish municipalities as they see fit. That young gentleman in that photo is Iowa Supreme Court Judge John Forrest Dillon. Who made a decision back in the mid eighteen hundreds, which set the precedent for this term. So I'm gonna run through now what are authorized services versus mandated services, and then there's another category, which I'll touch on briefly. So in North Carolina, you have things that are authorized only for municipalities. Cable television, cemeteries, gas systems, sidewalks. These things can only be done by municipalities, so you'll never find a a county owned street or a county owned sidewalk. I mean, of course, you'll find them internal to of development, but not along the side of the road, for example. And then in counties, they are authorized to do a number of different things that municipalities are not. Things that you're familiar with, agricultural extension offices, medical examiner, public health, the school system. Those are only authorized for counties. Then you have a list that allows either the county or municipality to take part in these services. Airports. Art galleries, civil defense, public transportation, community appearance, which would be like. Architectural review standard board, fire protection inspections. There's a number of different things that are authorized for both municipalities and counties. So those are what's authorized. Then you have categories of. Services that are mandated. So you'll you'll probably hear county government officials talk about the. The portion of their budgets that are already spoken for or that are required by state or mandated, something like that. And those are sections of the county's budget that it. And those are sections of the county's budget that it has to provide. It doesn't have the option. The state says, as a county in this state, you will provide public education, social services, jails, so on and so forth. And in North Carolina, the only thing that towns are required to require to provide is building code enforcement, which is interesting, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Then you have this other category. So you have authorized for towns or cities, authorized for counties. And then you have some other authorizations that happen at the state level through the state legislature. And they'll approve what's called a local bill, and it'll say Mills River is allowed to do this or do that. There are many, many, many of these across the state that have been typically worked through your local delegation, and then it goes to the general assembly and gets voted on. But it can it can authorize an agency to provide something other than wouldn't normally be able to to offer. So on Mills River, we provide fire protection, law enforcement, planning and zoning, street lighting, parks and recreation, street maintenance, and what you see kind of grayed out there is building code enforcement. So remember, I mentioned that municipalities are required to provide building code enforcement. And the vast majority of municipalities do not provide building code enforcement in-house. They contract with their local, their county that already has building inspections and building inspection staff. And that's the same thing that the town does. We have an agreement with Henderson County whereby they collect the permit fees for new construction. In an exchange for that, they provide a service to the town. The alternative would be that the town hires building code enforcement officers and issues building permitting or issues building permits, but it's much more efficient to just have the county do it. And these are the four core services that the town started with, fire protection, law enforcement, planning and zoning, and street lighting. Parks and Recreation is not one of the eight services that the state says that you can provide to become a municipality. However, it is the most visible and it is the most used service that this town offers. You can just look out the windows and see all the people out here, and there are a lot of folks that come and utilize this facility. Street maintenance is one of those state authorized services that we do provide with maintain town center drive. I'm sorry, that last year. So all in all, we provide these six services with tax revenue generated by property tax and sales tax revenue. So just in summary, again, authorized services, mandated services, other, which would be like a local bill. And then we have Mills River Services, and I like this quote because I think it is short and sweet and gets to the point, and that is governments exist to provide services. That is why governments exist. At the national level, you know, there's national defense, welfare programs, so on and so forth, but the local level, there's police, law enforcement, fire protection, planning and zoning, and that's why we are all here to provide these services to the community. And you do that with having the appropriate levels of staff and tools and resources available to provide those services. Any questions so far? Feel free to stop me as we get go through this. It's a lot of information. So a couple of accomplishments and noteworthy items I wanted to mention, the stream bank restoration project is effectively finished. There's a couple of laws and ends, but it looks wonderful out there. If you've not seen, I'll take a walk back there. The vehicle chargers were completed last fiscal year, but we finally got the finishing touches on this year and received the rebate check of twenty thousand dollars for that project. We hired additional personnel in our parks department, which allowed us to bring some other services that we were paying for in-house and also provide additional support to our very heavily used park. We recently got all the American Rescue Plan Act policies adopted, which allows us to allow council to authorize expenditures for those purposes. We completed the website. I came online early winter of last year. It has been a dramatic improvement in functionality and ease of use for staff, and we've received several compliments from the public about its appearance and ease of use, and that information up there is is that's interesting. Anyway, it's a great website. The picnic shelter obviously is not started or is not done, but we started it this year. We've got the contract signed. Working through the final steps of getting the building permits for that squared away, so we can start construction on that. And then we have effectively a whole new council, which I think is noteworthy. Mayor Gontan, I know you've been on the board before, and Mayor Protem Austin, you've been here. But as a as a body, the group that we had in October is very different than the group we have now. So six months into your role, you're you're looking at a budget that's over five million dollars. So it's 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 a noteworthy accomplishment, I think, to be able to be where you are now. So now we'll get into the actual budget development itself and how we put together the budget. So first of all, what is a budget? By definition, a plan of financial activity for a specified period of time, in our case fiscal year, based on expected revenues and expenses for that budget period. Again, that's a twelve-month period for us. So you look at it in terms of dollars and cents, look at your revenues and expenditures. And that's a step you have to take. That's crucial. You have to do it to be able to have a budget. But really, what a budget is, is a policy document. Because you prioritize what you wanna do in terms of service offering, service expansions, capital investments. You identify those in the budget, and the way that you make them happen is by budgeting for them. Typically, you try to tie all of those services back to a goal, a plan, a previous decision that council has made. So yes, it is, you have to look at the numbers, but it's more of a policy document than it is than it is anything else. So in the development of the budget, there's a couple of things that are required by the state. First of all, April thirtieth is the deadline for department heads to provide requests to the town manager, which is also the budget officer by statute. And then by by June first, the budget has to be presented to the elected body, which is why we're here this evening, May twelfth. You have to have a public hearing, and the budget has to be adopted by July first of each year. So you can see, we started with visioning on March fourteenth, and departmental budget were developed. What's not in here, but was another step in the kit process was capital project development. And all that's in your packet that you have in front of you. And then we have the components of the budget itself. So you have the budget budget message, which is basically kind of a snapshot in time outlining the highlights of the budget, the tax rate, expected revenues, and then a couple of highlights for the for the upcoming year in terms of major revenues or expenditures. So now we'll actually get into the numbers, and I'll start off by saying that the property tax rate of nineteen cents is recommended to stay the same. Property values have increased, which allows us to provide additional services with no additional tax rate. And just so the public is aware, eight cents funds town operations, eleven cents funds, the most of the fire and rescue services. As a pass-through, the town collects those revenues on behalf of the fire department and sends a check once a month. The total property valuation in the town is one point six billion dollars, which is up one point four last year. We're budgeting for a collection rate of ninety-eight percent. Remember, I mentioned early on that you'll never collect a hundred percent. It's very rare. But you collect a hundred percent of your tax bills. We've been routinely above ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent for several years. So conservatively speaking, we're playing for ninety-eight percent collections. We have a healthy capital investment this year, nine hundred and seven thousand dollars for several projects we'll get into later on. And then a cost of living adjustment of seven percent, which is a very large cost of living adjustment. This is unusually high. I'm sure you've all heard that inflation is as high as it's been in about forty years. And then we're recommending a three percent potential increase for merit. And I mentioned one penny earlier, a penny of the town's tax rate, a property value rather, is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
So then let's talk to you there just a minute. So if I'm doing the math correct, our tax rate, eleven cents, that is basically directly to the park. Well, if I do the math on that other eight cents, almost all of that goes to sheriff. So we're basically surviving just off of a little bit of tax and then sales tax, right?
That's one way to look at it, yes. Typically, when when I prepare budgets, I look at the core services the town offers. And that's law enforcement, police, planning and zoning, and then parks and recreation. And I make sure that we can fund personnel for all those departments out of tax revenue, because that is the most reliable, the single most reliable source of revenue the town has. So even if we have a down year in sales tax, it's unlikely that we will have a dramatic drop in revenues from property tax. So my my first priority is to make sure we have the people in the offices to do the work, because again, we're here to provide services, and you can't provide services without people. But yes, if you looked at it from taking the sheriff's contract at about nine hundred thousand dollars, then yours, a penny of your eight cents goes. Yeah, so you you can cover the sheriff's contract and a little bit more.
Well, basically, just so the taxpayers of Mills River know, the nineteen cents basically pays for where fire and police for a little bit.
That's right. I know, I just thought this was interesting. In two thousand, fiscal year two thousand four, the town's budget was one point eight million. These are today's dollars, by the way. These are adjusted. The actual number was about one point three, if I'm not mistaken. There's one full-time employee, two thousand ten, and actually dropped a little bit, or four full-time employees. In FY twenty, we went up to eight full-time employees. But that's significant because we added an entire park system. So we've had to staff up to maintain that and propose this year is eleven full-time employees. And the budget's four point seven million, and that's not include capital. That's just operating expenditures. Going back to the the cost of living adjustment I mentioned earlier, this is the, this is just twenty years worth of the consumer price index that you might hear referred to as inflation. It's significantly higher than where it has been for a long, long time. In January, it was at seven and a half percent. In February, it was up to seven point nine. March, it was at eight point five, and as of yesterday, numbers for April came out, and it was eight point three percent. So basically, what that means is for every dollar you spend, inflation's, or if the CPI is at eight percent, it's worth ninety-two cents. So you're 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 not keeping up with with costs of sort of goods. So now we'll jump into the actual budget document itself and the numbers associated with it. So what you see on this slide on the far left-hand side are the account codes and the specific line items that we track through our accounting software. And we have a number of other sources of revenue beyond sales tax and and property tax. I'm gonna, I'll get into that in a moment. So on the left, you have the actual line items on the first column, which is FY twenty-two approved. That's what was approved is last year, well, the current fiscal year's budget. Then you'll see FY twenty-two amended, which is the current fiscal year budget with some amendments to it. And then what you have in the green, greenish, bluish color there is the FY twenty-three recommended budget. And that's the, that's my recommendation to you as your manager slash budget officer to account for in terms of expected revenues. That is a large increase in terms of percentage, just eleven percent over the current year. That's conservatively estimating based off the data we have from Henderson County, which provides the the property evaluations. Motor vehicle taxes have gone up. We are expecting some declines in a couple of the franchise taxes, just as people use those less to generate less revenue. I'll talk about Saks in a little bit more detail later on. What you see there, it's just over a million dollars. And then what is significant near the bottom of this is starting at grant funds. The at two hundred thousand dollars in the green column. That's a grant that we intend to apply for and hopefully will receive to help with one of the capital projects, and I'll get into that later on in more detail. And then beneath that, the very bottom line, we've got total revenue. If you go up one from that, you've got the number seven hundred ten thousand dollars. In terms of operations, we cover that with existing revenues, property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, permits, all those sorts of things. And then for capital projects, we use an appropriation of fund balance. That's taking money out of your savings account and using it for one-time expenditures. You should never use fund balance to balance a budget for operations. Some people do it in very small sums, but really, your fund balance there is is not there for to balance your operational budget. That's for savings for emergencies, for grant opportunities, other opportunities that come up throughout the year. And then one-time expenditures, in our case, which are capital projects. Moving on from that green column, we've got the value change, which is just that, is the numerical difference between the approved budget and the recommended budget, and then the percent change based on approved versus recommended, and then a percent of the budget. On that very last column on the right.
Daniel, on that spreadsheet, I was just curious about the the reduction in revenue from park rental fees, but what's driving that?
Just looking at the historical data, we haven't had that many reservations this year. I think we've had one. So just accounting for for two of those, basically. Any other questions on this spreadsheet? A little bit higher level, way to look at this, you've got your revenues on the left in that table. And on the right-hand side, there is a pie chart visually illustrating where the money is coming from. This is again, this is revenue. So you see about fifty percent is the property taxes. The next biggest chunk is the state shared revenues, which is sales tax. And then everything else makes up the balance of it. You'll you'll notice that at the top of the pie, there is this brownish color right here, and that's the appropriation of fund balance. Technically, that's treated as a revenue, even though the town already has the money. You show it as a revenue in the budget. And this is just some information I want to provide for context in terms of historical value. You can see that the property tax levy has increased really steadily for the last ten years. This is to be expected as as new construction happens. The revaluation next year will be interesting to see where where we end up. But you can see they're generally on on a positive incline there. So you have the the valuation of the property, then you have the tax collected from that, and that's, this is where your budget number comes from each year. We estimate the amount of revenue we expect from that based on the collection percentage. And what you wanna see is this, where your collected numbers, which shows up in those black bars, exceeds the green line, which is the budgeted amount. We've been fortunate that we have an excellent tax collector and conservative budgeting policies, and we're able to exceed collections over budgeted pretty routinely. Sales tax, this is one of the other largest sources of revenue for the town. On an annual basis, you can see the numbers have have grown fairly significantly in the last, what are the last three years? Two thousand nineteen was what I'll call the quote last normal year we had prior to the to the impacts of COVID nineteen. We expected sales taxes to drop during the pandemic. They did the complete opposite. And in just about every local government across the state had the same experience, which was a pleasant surprise for the year. And these have continued to increase year over year. This, I wanted to show, really just for informational purposes, this is sales tax collections by the month. So we receive these funds from the state once a month for transactions that happened three months prior. So if you get a distribution from the state in the month of May, it's actually for sales that happened in the month of February, right? Okay. So there's always a little bit of a lag, and you'll notice these these dips that we have here. These happen every year. And they're roughly twelve to thirteen percent of the average up to that point. You'll see that reduction beginning in April, and then it bounces back up a little bit in June, May, and then in June, you're basically back up to where you were. So those are, these seasonal drops are normal. You see them, big spikes around the holidays and the drops off, drop off, and these are, these are quarterly data points right here. You see them, big spikes around the holidays and the drops off, drop off, and these are, these are quarterly data points right here. And again, this is what you want to see in your audit each year, and that is your collections is exceeding the budgeted amount, so. What you see on the chart there on the right is you have your actual number in black, and the budgeted number is the green, and again, for the pandemic, we had budgeted six hundred thousand dollars the year prior going into fiscal year twenty. We anticipated a thirty percent reduction in uh, receipts, which equals five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but what we actually saw was over a million dollars, so again, very surprised by that. And so for the current fiscal year that we are in, uh, we budgeted nine hundred thousand. But what we are expecting to bring in by the end of the year is uh, one point two million. Again, this takes into account that seasonal drop, plus coming back up in the month of June. So we're averaging around uh, just over a hundred thousand dollars a month up to this point, and for next year's budget, uh, we are basing revenues off of ninety thousand dollars a month, so slightly reduced over actual receipts for this year. But still significantly higher than, than where we have been in years past. Any questions on sales tax or anything like that before I move on? So on the expenditure side of things, um, again, you have your, your table on the left that summarizes the expenditure categories, and on the right-hand side, you see the graph showing where those monies are going. And not surprisingly, as we discussed a moment ago, the fire tax um, collection would turn into an expenditure, and the police law enforcement contract make up forty-five-ish percent of the town's expenditures this year. And big, bigger than it has been this year is the capital, at nine hundred and seven thousand dollars, but again, that's the full cost of the projects, we are seeking grants which are lower than actual dollar figure, uh, once those grants were reimbursed, assuming we received them. Parks is a, is a, is a pretty healthy chunk, but again, that's our most used asset, sees thousands of people a week. Administration is fairly large, that's where we have most of our salaries for our staff, or fall within administration. And then planning and zoning, making up a larger chunk this year, as we are requesting additional position for that department. So similar to the revenues, we have an expenditure comparison based off of the current year's budget and the recommended budget for this year, so again, that first column is, is the broad category. The second column FY twenty-two approved is the actual budget for the year that we're in, and then skipping ahead to FY twenty-three. That's the recommended budget for the upcoming year, and then again, value percent. And I think the last column is really interesting, because if you, if you look at these numbers as they are, and you think governing body, a fifty-four percent increase, that's a drastic increase. Well, it is in terms of the percentage, uh, but in terms of the impact of the budget, it's very, very minimal. Because if you, if you break this down to what it actually means, sixty-three percent of the budget, uh, which consists of a hundred percent, it's really six cents. So every dollar revenue that comes in, six cents of it's going to pay for the governing body. For the sheriff's contract, least apartment, sixteen cents of every dollar that comes in goes to the sheriff's office contract, and then at the bottom there, you see a hundred percent is equal to a dollar revenue. Now, this takes into account all revenue, including uh, fund balance appropriation. We took out the fund balance, which is the capital, those numbers will be slightly different. The point is, though, uh, while you might see a large increase percentage-wise, the actual impact of the budget does not nearly as, as much as it would seem. So getting right through a couple of highlights uh, on the expenditure side of things. First of all, what we call interfund, um, we have two capital reserve accounts we established a couple of years ago. One of which is for parks, the other of which is town hall, and the parks account is for bikeways, greenways, improvements of the park. Town hall is for the, either the expansion of this building or the construction of a new facility in the years to come. And one thing I've mentioned in the past and touched on earlier this evening is that the budget is balanced when it's presented to you. Some jurisdictions will uh, budget for savings. In other words, they will very conservatively uh, estimate revenues and expenditures such that um, they almost guarantee themselves uh, leftover fu- funding at the end of the year, that's not how this budget is developed, this budget is based off of actual numbers what we expect to bring in, which is what we expect to spend. So the appropriate way to, to save money for future projects is setting up capital reserve accounts. And all this really means is we roll over to the next fiscal year, and there's a transfer from, from one fund to the reserve fund, and that money is set aside for that specific purpose. And last year, it was one and a quarter pennies, I believe. With fifth and a half of a penny going to parks and three quarters of a penny going to town hall. This year, we brought those up at the same value, which results in a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars going to parks and the same for town hall. So again, thinking about it in terms of a penny of your tax rate, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars is just, just over a penny. Spending half of the tax rate is dedicated to savings for those projects. Governing body, again, uh.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we're, if we have a question about a line item on, on budget here, when would you like for us to address that?
If it's all right with the board, I'd prefer to just run through all this, so the public can see it, and then we can go back to specific line items of that works, okay. Uh, for the governing body, which is this body, town council, the town has been paying a, a small stipend for several years to elected officials, it has not been adjusted in some time. Uh, I'm recommending that it be adjusted up to twenty-nine thousand dollars this year, which again, percentage-wise, seventy percent, sounds like a lot. There's a breakdown of these expenses on the next slide, I'll show you in just a moment, but that's really in response to the amount of work that goes into, to serving in this role. It's not just coming to the meetings every second, fourth Thursday of the month, as you all well know, there are other meetings you attend. There is time associated with um, going to meetings, reviewing these budgets, reviewing council packets. So in terms of the, the actual breakdown, currently what everyone earns is three thousand three hundred dollars a year. We pay that monthly. Uh, what's proposed is um, sixty-five hundred dollars for the mayor, six thousand for the mayor pro temp, and then fifty-five hundred for each council member. And where do those numbers come from? Those numbers came from some research based off of neighboring jurisdictions. The amount of time that goes into it. Council salaries or stipends range from a hundred and fifty dollars a year to eleven thousand dollars a year. And small, and smaller jurisdictions like us, obviously in larger jurisdictions, they can be up to tens of thousands of dollars. So there really is no benchmark, so to speak, if you want to look to and, and say, we fit that, those town descriptions, we're going to use that rate, this is, this is my estimation based on uh, work that you all do and some of our neighboring communities. So in administration, um, we've, we're requesting a, a part-time position for that department. And um, a couple of highlights in this department as well is that part-time position would help with um, service delivery and create some efficiencies in the office, we have a clerk who's retiring uh, in a few years, we have a deputy clerk in training. We have a tax blocker who's retiring uh, in a few years, so they say. Anyway, so in terms of succession planning, we're, we're trying to get the deputy clerks some time away from the phones in the front office to, to work and train and assume additional responsibilities, so that position would allow uh, the administrative assistant to step away from the office and go work on clerk assignments. There's also an increase in the audit uh, line item, that's because the American Rescue Plan Act requires that we do a different type of audit than we normally do. And community services uh, show a large increase, that's at forty-five thousand dollars, and that's where we account for nonprofit funding requests. Uh, in planning and zoning, you'll notice this is also percentage-wise, a, a, a very large increase in the budget, at fifty percent. Right now, it's one person, we're recommending it be two people, so project dictates you would pay just about twice as much. Now, the salary for the new position um, is much lower than the, the current salary for the zoning administrator, because the experience and education requirements and the responsibilities are, are lower. Uh, but it does take into account that extra position, so you have extra benefits to provide. Um, and then at the bottom there, we have additional funding set aside for the permit software, which is a subscription that we pay every year. So uh, nothing extraordinarily different about planning and zoning, other than as you, if you had a chance to review your packet, the, some administrator is stretched very, very thin right now, and this new position will alleviate delays in services, uh, increased permit review times, increased code enforcement, presence inspections and enforcement. Uh, so it's, it's a much needed position. In parks recreation, it's uh, similar, we are requesting a full-time position for a parks programmer. Um, which would be a, a new position that would assist the director in scheduling special events. Town-sponsored events, that is, not, not things that are brought by other groups. Other programs could be a summer camp, the, the opportunity to really endless there as far as what programming can look like. This is a very high demand based off of the um, parks recreation master plan that was completed, adopted last year. Ninety-five percent of those who responded requested additional programming in the park. Um, so again, you see increases in salaries, also fringe benefits, the programming line item. Um, and then building inspections, which would be some additional can't think of the word, I'm going to say amenities, but they're not really amenities, picnic tables and things like that, the new picnic shelter. And then you'll notice a decrease in contracted services for parks, which is the mowing, which we are no longer contracting out, we're doing that in the house now. So I'll just touch briefly on capital, um, we started a few years ago developing a capital improvement plan that had uh, numbers associated with it as well, it's project identified and narratives explaining what each of the projects are. And uh, we break it out by public facilities, transportation, parks recreation, communities development and equipment. And not surprisingly, you see a large investment in parks recreation. The, the majority of that is for a new facility on Banner Farm Road. At the town, on the town's property, that's a parking lot, and then at Mills River Park, there's a couple of projects planned. Uh, the largest one is the construction of a new ramp down to the playground from the upper parking lot up here, as well as a set of steps, if you've been in the park for any amount of time, you've seen families, young kids, old, older parents, grandparents, trying to navigate that very steep hill down to the playground, and it simply isn't safe. Um, so this, this budget includes a request to install those that handicap ramp as well as the steps, I mentioned earlier, a grant in the revenue side of the budget. There is a new program through the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund that uh, is dedicated towards providing accessible play areas. Um, currently, there is not a good route for someone in a wheelchair to get to the town's playground, this would provide a direct access to the facilities. Um, under public facilities, again, narratives are included in your, in your budget document, but I'll just touch on these. Our cell tower improvements, Henderson County is planning to upgrade one of its cell towers in Mills River. The county plans to spend uh, the, the total cost is two hundred thousand dollars, the town, the county has requested the town pay for five hundred, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars of that. And then building maintenance and conference room upgrades, uh, maintenance is basically new carpet throughout this building, including this room, the library, as well as all the offices on the other side of the building. The conference room upgrades um, are, is for the small conference room that staff uses as doubles as a break room. We plan to install a couple of cubicles back there, again, going back to deputy clerk, uh, can have her place to work. And or as owning a, a planning technician to work back there as well. The portion of this is recommended to be funded by transferring funds out of the um, unassigned, but well, assigned fund balance for building reserves, which is about forty-six thousand dollars, but pay for ma- building maintenance line as well as the conference room. And that money was, was held in reserve as part of the USDA grant that the town had to build this building, and when the grant was paid off, we set that money in reserve to be used for building maintenance. Transportation, there's no recommendations for any funding this coming year. Uh, the Mills River Valley Trail was on the books to be designed two years ago, and then last year. As you are probably aware, the State Department of Transportation is having some funding issues and are having to reprioritize projects, and part of that work identified cost estimates, uh, they had to redo those essentially, and originally, this project, the engineering and design was uh, set at three hundred thousand dollars, but now it looks like it's going to be near a million dollars, if not more. The town is still obligated to the twenty percent match. It's tentatizing forward with it, which is two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and the funding source for that would be local fund balance appropriated as well as deserving Carolina has raised sixty thousand dollars, which was twenty percent of the original three hundred thousand dollar match. Weekend, I recommend not doing, funding any of that this year, because there's a lot of uncertainty around those project costs. The numbers I saw a few weeks ago were, were very, very high, obviously, but left out a lot of detail, and so I just did not feel comfortable recommending that be pursue that until we have more information. I know this is hard to read, but it's, the information is in your packet, this is a breakdown of Parks and Recreation, and this playground access right here is what I mentioned, we would be applying for the grant for the maintenance upgrades, the forty thousand is for the tennis courts, which is in your packet, and then civic rec is uh, basically works in conjunction with our website, it's the same company. Uh, and it will provide an opportunity for people to register for events, um, sign up for programs, pay for things online, all of which is done by hand right now, payment, payment, that is, either cash or check. It's a ten thousand dollar implementation fee, the subscription fee would drop down to about five thousand dollars in subsequent years. And again, as capital projects, these are one-time expenditures, you'll see um, if this is approved, the, the implementation of the software this year, and then next year, you'll see a slight increase in operating expenditures for that subscription. For community development, we're not recommending anything this year for the current year that we're in, we have twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-five. That was the cost of the website upgrade. Next year, I'm recommending that we look at updating the town ordinances. There are a, a number of inconsistencies, some of them are outdated. And they need to be updated to, to match the town's purpose and desires moving forward. Um, and potentially consolidate them into what's called the Unified Development Ordinance, which, which is where you would have essentially one ordinance book that contains all the development standards, including subdivision building design, zoning and, and other land use development regulations. That will be an investment by the town, for sure, for sure. Uh, this is a conservative estimate of two hundred thousand dollars, I've spoken to a few consultants. And it may be cheaper than that, but for planning purposes, I'm, I'm being conservative there. And that would be likely about a year-long process. And then equipment, we have for the upcoming year, FY twenty-three, computer replacements, and that's for new employees as well as existing employees, we have machines on a three-year replacement cycle. So a couple of them are due this coming year. And it also includes any monitors for docking stations or anything like that for the new employees that we might need, that's why the number is, is what it is. In summary, expenditure-wise, uh, this budget shows a lot of investment, a lot of investment in people and the community, and capital projects, all of which are geared towards providing high-quality services to town and Mills River residents, as well as visitors. Uh, maintaining what the town currently has, providing uh, increased service delivery with the expansion of parks programming, as well as code enforcement, and efficiency and service delivery, again, going back to personnel, you, you might have noticed in the budget, there are several positions that are combined, for example, finance director. For example, Finance Director and Town Clerk. Accounting Clerk and Administrative Assistant, Tax Collector and AP Manager. There, the the need for staff. Um is is a fairly constant uh need in local government. Um in this organization, we're limited by space. Um we we could use additional personnel in the future, uh but again, trying to, trying to be efficient in what we have. Hiring that part-time position would help us uh help us with that. So there's a couple of options for next steps. Um you could have a work session on the twenty-sixth. That is your regular council meeting date. So again, you can have that. As your regular meeting, it could be an agenda item. There are a few other items proposed on that agenda, but they're very light. Um would not take much time at all. Um or you could, you could have a work session, say at three thirty. And work for a couple hours and then come back and have your regular meeting at six thirty. Um we could also set that. Earlier, if we wanted to, May nineteenth is next Thursday, if council wanted to do that. Um June ninth was tentatively set for the public hearing, uh which is where uh the town council would. Take action, conduct a public hearing, take comment. Um and could potentially adopt it. That could also be a work session if council would like that additional time. Uh June twenty-third is your second regular meeting in the month of June. Um and that could be the public hearing as well as the adoption. Uh now I mentioned you could meet again after the twenty-third. Uh but you really need to have something adopted by July first, so we can kind of fiscal year. Following state law and and just being good stewards of of taxpayer money. So I think there probably are some questions, and I will. Hand it back to you, Mayor, to see how you want to handle it. I'm happy to go through whatever items we want to discuss.
Yeah, I was just thinking council just speak up.
I would be happy doing a work session aside from my regular council meeting, so that we can. You know, discuss it and talk things over and learn about it and. Kind of work on it that way, that way it don't get into the council meeting.
Randy, I know you had a few questions for.
Um several of my questions were probably, Daniel could answer very quickly or off the top of his head, probably. I mean, I don't have a problem going over this again and and maybe coming in a little too early and talking about. Did you say the nine or the?
Twenty-six is your next regular meeting day.
I welcome that idea. I have on twenty-six, I've got two other engagements that they that prior to that meeting. I do welcome a work session outside the regular meeting, but uh it would have to be on date other than the twenty-sixth.
MPO probably on the twenty-sixth.
That's a good point.
MPO and your Essex training in the morning from ten to twelve. I hope that's on your schedule.
Yo. In looking through this, I mean. How many things come up to you that needs to be addressed? That you that you could think of, so I can get a timeframe for how much time we're gonna need with Dana to. Get through it. That's what I was thinking. And some of them may be the same. You want uh.
I'm happy to tackle anything that.
Let's go through a few of them.
Yeah.
They might shorten it up another day if we. Yeah. Uh it's just our regular agenda. You uh saying.
I'll go ahead and start if you want to do so. So like on the parks budget, I guess Nicole probably answer this, some of this. You're doubling your quest for overtime. Is that uh because you saw need in the past as of year? For more.
A couple of things. One, the part-time market has been, we've had a lot of turnover, which has required our part-time staff to step in. Um we are, we did run out of overtime money this year in April. Um so I know there's, we. Need some more money. Our hope is that we're fully staffed and we don't need as much, but also with the additional potential special events on weekends as we get into programming. There will be a a little more opportunity or need on potential weekends and stuff. That if they're moving on weekends, they may may need to come in for a Saturday special event. So I'm trying to account for that.
Okay, while we're on that, uh did we find somebody in the. Park staff or something to help move the trailer for the farmer's market?
So that's a good question while we're looking about this overtime. Nicole and I have talked about some options for that. Um you just want to run through those a little bit too. I don't want to push you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I think I have my answer.
While she was looking that up, I'll just mention on the overtime, the park system's a little bit unique. Um all employees, not all my employees are. Allowed to accumulate downtime. So you work over forty hours, you get an hour and a half for every hour. Um that's great. In in the park system, we don't love that idea because we really need people here. So that's why overtime is 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 a good thing to have because it encourages those folks to work those extra hours rather than. Take them off.
Um yeah, we did come up, we did talk about a few different options. Um and I think he had some conversations with our town attorney that I think he can get into, but as far as. If we're looking to fill it with current staff, the different options we came up with um is. Um basically, if we want someone to come in Saturday that they get here before the market starts, they're there to kind of help the farmer's market. During the day, there's about six hours that they would have to work. So for overtime, um. The average overtime for my employees, it would be twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents an hour at six hours. So basically a hundred and sixty-eight dollars um a week to do that at twenty-six weeks. So it'd be about four thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um I have a little bit of concern that that's a lot of overtime. It would be pretty taxing on staff um. To do that. Um the other option you kind of came up with, and this is again, not 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 having talked to the farmer's market. Is uh maybe on Fridays, the school would let them drop off the trailer on Friday night. And then Saturday with, you know, maybe about three hours of overtime a week. They could, whenever the farmer's market's done, as long as it was gone by Monday morning. So that could be three hours of overtime, and that would cost less too. Um so that would be about uh just over two thousand dollars in overtime. Plus all the benefits. And the third option that we have for more consistency. Is that we talked about, and I haven't talked to any of my employees to see if they'd be interested, but potentially moving an employee to work a. Um Tuesday through Saturday schedule. So that way you'd know and consistently have somebody here. Um you know, obviously, that's not what they were hired for. So if that was an, I think that is a really good option to have the most consistency, familiarity. Um and they, of course, could do, you know, they could go do their farmer's market responsibility. They can come back, they can mow, they can do. Some of their other responsibilities, work a full eight-hour day on a Saturday. Um but I would ask if. We do want to offer that to one of our employees, that we compensate them for working, and just, you know. Going from a Monday through Friday schedule, it's like shift work, you know, you get maybe paid that bonus. So I would like to look into adding, you know, an additional salary bonus for maybe changing their schedule. So those were kind of the three different options. Um we tossed around. Um as I said, the most. Expensive being, you know, just under five thousand dollars to have overtime paid on a Saturday. Um as I said, if we're doing, you know, a Friday afternoon, again, not knowing how the school feels about having their trailers left and. The liability of the farm market would want to keep by it not being in any um travel place or, again, adjusting the schedule. Of one of the full-time employees that they can go help the farmer's market drop off, come back, do their regular duties on a Saturday. At noon, go back, help the farmer's market. Um but then I would ask that we, for as a little incentive for changing their schedule, that we could look at a small pay incentive. To do that. So that's kind of some of the things we.
And and just one thing I'll add, Mr. Mayor, is we have a request from the farm market for some additional funding this year. And the reason Nicole and I didn't come to you today with a a solid recommendation of A B or C is. I think it's a broader discussion that we need to have. If the town is gonna be paying for a manager, I, you know, I've heard some from some folks that. It might make sense for that, all that responsibility to come back to the town, so. I don't have an answer for you at this point, but I I think it's part of a broader discussion we need to iron out.
Okay, I just, I know that we talked about helping them get that trailer moved and I asked and. They, I guess, did it on your own this week again, so I was just looking into that. Um. Okay, we'll move on with this and then we'll might get back to that later on in the council comment.
And buildings and structures improvements on there, on the line item, on the park budget, Nicole's. An increase of fourteen thousand dollars.
That was. That is a big chunk of that is, I think you mentioned picnic tables. So we're building our new facility. We're gonna need the tables to go underneath it. Um and then the other is, we were, would hope to add security cameras to that facility once it's complete. So those are the two big, almost ten thousand dollars of that is between those two. Um structures is to add, you know, the trash cans, the um, you know, grill to that space, you know, kind of make it. Make it feel like home once we get the the structure built. And then again, to add those security cameras that we have at the rest of the facilities.
Did you mention to me down at the baseball field the other day that we had a possible issue with a uh needing a spot for a. The lawnmower or a different lawnmower?
The lawnmower.
Or deck or something.
Oh, what, just um, well, long term, that was in reference, so we're trying to work through. Uh the backfield where we're looking at converting some of that to maintain the open space and then the rest of it to Wildflower Meadow. Um so a lot of that discussion is on a, you know, a sixty-inch deck mower to be able to maintain that space. Be great if we could get an attachment, like a mower attachment and a finish mower or something that we can pull behind the tractor to be more time efficient. But then it went to the, well, where do we put it? And we're out of space in our maintenance building. So that's, I don't think that's an immediate need for this year, but as we start to convert that over. Space in our maintenance building is something that um we are running out of, never enough room in a storage building, right?
Right.
I thought that when we discussed the new picnic shelter bathroom, that it was a turnkey job, that that included. Tables and everything to go in it.
Uh the, everything structurally is included. So again, like toilets and. Everything that goes in the building, but anything that is, I guess, essentially outside the building was, is not included in that construction project. So that would go through facility maintenance.
Okay.
Daniel, I I would like to say in public, but I, tonight's the first night I've seen that sheriff's contract. Number, and I would assume that you've talked to the. Someone from the county and they give you that nine nineteen number.
Mm-hmm.
And that's up from eight oh four.
That's right.
So a hundred and fifteen thousand increase this year.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's right. The uh Deputy Chief um Gilbert from Henderson County Sheriff's Office provided that to me. A week or so ago, and and that's part of their responsibility in that contract is to provide to the town the estimated cost of that service each year. And I simply programmed it into the budget.
And I'm assuming that's as the contract was written last year, there's saying they added deputies or.
That's right.
Just, okay.
That's right. That's their their increase of the cost of services accounting for. Um I believe salary adjustments and of course to inflation, gas prices, those sorts of things. And of course, they do pro-rate some of their equipment. Um and I have spoken to uh the county manager about taking a close look at that and see if there's any way that we can tighten that up a little bit, because that is. One, it's a big increase. Two, it's a very large percentage of our budget.
That's almost a penny.
Mm-hmm. Right.
A penny increase.
Yeah.
What else you got, Frank?
I'm sorry, Dan. Uh so it'd be on the administration page, uh community services.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain what they're in?
Yeah, so we had um. Was like seventy-one thousand dollars worth of requests from nonprofits at your last meeting. I pared that down based off of previous experience. There was a couple of them specifically. Observer Partnership and the Blue Ridge Literacy Council, who have not requested funding in the past, and so. I recommended that we fund both of those that uh about half of what they had asked for. Um just as an entry uh first year into it. Um if you give me just one moment, I can, I can pull up that spreadsheet. We can talk about it a little bit more.
So that, that's where the nonprofit funding.
That's right.
Plan in the budget is that.
That's right. And we created that um line item. Last year because we were putting it in community relations.
Mm-hmm.
Um it just wasn't an appropriate place to put it.
And last year, we spent eighteen thousand dollars on that type of program, and you're proposing. Forty-five thousand.
Correct. That's right.
Daniel, if we. If we, and I hope we do, can get in a situation where we can. Help the Mills River Farmer's Market.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be something that we could put a, like a. I I think you, you called it an interfund program to set that money aside yearly. So both the town council, the town community and the farmer's market would know what we plan to. Help them with on a year-to-year basis based on that, or is that not the right thing to do? Or this?
Do you want to tackle that? I I'm not sure that. Yeah, I'm just not sure that a reserve account can be used for that purpose, but I'm gonna defer to Sue.
Uh and and I would agree with him. I don't think that's the right way to do it. My concern in. I'm gonna have to do some research on this is if we start automatically funding them every year. That we're gonna get credit as far as apartment revenue for running this, and we should be taking it over.
I got you.
And I I need to, it came up with a different nonprofit in another year, and it's been a few years, so I need to go back and do some research. So we have to be careful on how we walk this line.
Okay.
Unless we're gonna take over the farmer market.
Exactly.
So going on that just a little bit, I want to ask the four of y'all, are you, are we willing to fund this? Programmer's position this year?
How much is it again? And I know um. Feel free to answer. You know the number. Sandra, do you know that number off the top of your head?
I'm talking about the program physician. Why, uh seeing it's. Yeah. So I guess I'm trying to put everybody on the spot up here. Are we going, are we going to fund a program in position for or for the parks?
So we, the the recommendation is to set that person at pay grade fifteen. Which has a salary range of thirty-nine thousand dollars to fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Midpoint of that is forty-eight thousand seven ninety-eight. So we're recommending that starting salary be up to forty-eight thousand dollars. Based upon the qualifications of the person that who we hired for that.
Okay, so. Just want to get brought back to you in a minute, but if we hire this person. Would this person have the time to help with the. That what their name for a, what do y'all call a programmer also, right, or? Manager, market manager?
I think it all depends on where you put your priorities. So a a programmer for the town of Mills River can do recreation full-time a hundred percent. And probably still not meet the demand that we will get from the community. But obviously, the farm market is also a big demand we have in the community. So, uh you know, it's a give and take. So if you decide that the farm market should be a part of this position. Um then I think that you just. Then I think that you just, then you have less, but we may only do special events, we might not get to do some of the fitness class. Classes or other things, you know, we, it's a give and take. And then my only other concern with having a shared position, it goes back to what Sue said. So is if this is a parks department position. When they're overseeing the farmers market, are they my employee, a department, parks department employee? Or do they answer to the board of the farm market? And so that's, you know, some things that I I think can be worked through, but it's not a simple answer, and there certainly needs to be some.
And and there could potentially be liability when our employee is working over there for the farm market.
Exactly, my biggest concern here, and correct me if I'm wrong, do do y'all feel? That the farmer's market will sustain itself as is? With just financial support? Or if something happens to the Britons or something? Is it, does it, do y'all see a tendency for it to fall apart? Does it need something to keep it together?
I don't think it will fall apart, the the only concern is.
Would you come up?
At this very moment in time, if something happened to Joe and I, there would probably be some difficulties. Because we have managed it for so many years, and that's why we need to get somebody else. To onboard to take care of that.
We weren't manned, we've only, what, a third of its life, it wasn't managed by, or it's or half its life. And so, you know, it. It would continue, there'd be a rough patch if we were to suddenly just disappear. But, you know, it would, that's the reason we've been talking to the town the last couple of years about getting somebody. The financial support to hire somebody to come in. So nothing, you know, it would just be, continue on and to continue to grow and serve the community after we're gone.
My biggest concern is, is, you know, we talked about putting it over Mills River next to the brewery. With that grading and everything, we're just talking about potentially spending up to five hundred thousand dollars just for a parking lot for it. Which I'm not opposed to, especially if it's going to be used for other, other uses, but. I I want to help, but I want to make sure y'all feel like it's going to stay together regardless, and if we make it, make a go of it.
The market, I have no doubt, will will stay in action, it will continue to function. The only. If, like Joe was saying, if if something happened. See, I take, we take care of all the, Sandra has really jumped in to help with this, all the scheduling. Keeping the vendors notified, working on the weekly plan. Organizing the children's activity, I take care of all the banking, all the budgeting, all the bookkeeping. You see, so that's something that we have absorbed through the years as the market has grown. If you went back eight, nine, ten years ago, we all just showed up in the parking lot, sold our stuff. Because that's all we were at the time, but now we have evolved and changed and grown into a big enough entity. That that's why a manager is needed, because it's, it's. It's outgrown my capability to keep, keep up with it.
And as far as the time, you know, we were talking about part time, you know, combining things, which I don't have, you know, that would be something to sit down and really hash over. But the managing the market itself is would probably be. During market season, what we figure. Fifteen hours a week is all, and that's still only six months out of it, well.
Seven months.
Seven months, seven and a half months, because you've got to have your week or two ahead of time, and, you know, then to shut everything down after it's over. But, you know, it's basically just a part time fifteen hour week position.
Okay, what was your financial request from the town this year? I can't remember.
It's like about fifteen thousand, seems to be sticking in my head somewhere around there.
Fifteen, maybe eighteen, it was just, it was basically just to hire a salary for a manager. And then a salary for our kitchen coordinator and the.
It's fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty.
You know, the market, just to emphasize, the market is there. To help the local farmer, local producer and to serve the community. You know, it's, I've done a lot of markets in Asheville, and it's just, it really galls me when you have a market manager making thirty, forty thousand a year. And they could care less whether I sell anything as a vendor or not, their check clears, they don't care. And I want Mills River to be a totally different, it's for the community, and yes, we've grown to the point, this needs to be a paid position. You know, but.
That'll help us out a lot.
How many vendors did you have at market last week? Twenty five last week, we've got forty registered for the season, which is up. About ten from last year, in years past on opening day, we've had nine vendors, eleven vendors, we had twenty five this year, so. It is growing, and like a, like Paul said, we. We had over six hundred and fifty, which is two hundred more than we've ever had on any day.
And out of the vendors were there, how much revenue was generated?
I can't say, I don't remember. I know on our snap swipes, we had about three hundred dollars for opening day. Which is always a little small to start with, because they've got to get back in the habit of coming to shop.
Three hundred, that was double, so it was six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars, yeah.
Stuff bought from the market.
And and then the card swipes was about thirteen hundred dollars, and I have no idea on cash sales, but.
We can't get anybody to tell us their cash.
My. The the tokens I've received is about twenty percent of my gold. So you can multiply that.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Five.
Okay, gotcha.
Do you see where I'm, where I'm coming from? I can't in good conscience continue to recommend us funding a non, as the same nonprofit. At fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars a year, if we don't control. And when I say control it, I don't mean control it outside of the way the Britons are doing it, but. I think. It's not a service to the town, to us to spend the money to fund them up a specific nonprofit. Each and every year, if it's not part of the town's program. And if we're going to fund the programming position, I think that the farmer's market could be run. Initially by the program. Do you think that could happen, Nicole?
Yeah, as I said, I think as long as we can create those clear boundaries, though, of. If if they're a town employee, and if the farm market, again, I I guess I would really need.
The way I would see it run would be the the Board of Directors for the Farmer's Market now. Could be advisory committee to the, to the first, to the programmer. So we'd set up a advisory board, just like the planning board or the ag board. Anything is to advise for decisions for the farmer.
Would the farmer's market entertain that idea, or would they rather not?
Like sit down with details, but you know, we have our rules and regulations that, you know, we wouldn't want to see it suddenly turning into a market.
The articles of incorporation and the bylaws and all that stuff, so I don't know. How that.
We would have to consult our attorney on this, because I think. Just off the top of my head, making a s- a halfway educated guess, is that that would all have to be redone.
Town would just absorb it, and their five oh one C would just go away.
No, that's what I really want to see happen.
Well, that's why I asked you, that's why. The type of money that we're talking about spending, I'm hearing from outsiders, taxpayers. Maybe not farmers, but taxpayers, is they would like to see if we're going to spend this kind of money on the farmer's market. To let it be a piece of Mills River and just take it out and just go with it. If we want to buy a piece of property and put it on there and furnish water, sewer, nice bathrooms. Hopefully, one day, a big covered building. Big enough for all the vendors to park under, would be my goal. But you can see where that's going to be virtually impossible with taxpayer money. You know, just, I would like to see where, if we had the building and had the facility. Any farmer, any day of the week could come if he was associated with the program and back on their own site. On a daily basis.
That defeats the purpose of what's considered a low farmer's market, though, that turns into a.
A distribution.
Well.
The whole idea of the farmer's market is for the the community to kind of meet farmer, meet purpose, grow and producing it. And buy from them, supporting locals.
You know, the whole idea of the market is to get to know your farmer, the producer, you know, if you want. You know, that's the whole deal, is that relationship of buying the local food, supporting the local. You know, the community supporting the local producer, not, you know, being like the big distribution shed. You know, because how, how are we going to keep the pin hookers from coming in, you know, because you've sold over there at the big shed. They swore, you pull in there and they're, you know, they're swarming you, trying to.
Well, the logistics of it would be crazy too, because as it is now, we've got set hours. Shoppers, the community knows when the market's open, they know what vendors are going to be there and and things like that, it's, people just come and go. When they've got something to sell. The custom, the public would not know that they were going to be there, you know, if they just say, say, I've got extra stuff on Tuesday and I pull in on Tuesday. Nobody's going to know that I'm there on Tuesday, and and you'd have to have additional staff.
Problem is, you know, me, being from a farmer family, that one day a week, don't even interest a. Even a young generation farmer, he's like, well, I'm going to have stuff every day, I'm going to make a living doing this. I can't make a living selling this Saturday eight twelve eight one.
Well, it's a different farming mentality, is it not? That that comes to, that sells at the farmer's market.
Obvious, I guess.
No, we have, we have some people making their living farming or supplementing their income, you know, that's one spouses. Because you've got also look at it, that. If you're a medium sized, small farmer and you take yours to the truck shed, they tell you what they'll give you. You take to the packer, he tells you what he'll give you, you pull into a farmer's market. You usually get wholesale, I mean retail plus. You know, that's why, you know. I'd like to see all the board members come and visit the market a couple of times and see actually what's going on. You know, it's hard to sit here and say, you know, this is this or that's that when you haven't been.
Well, I've been on both ends of it, I sold there early, and to be honest with you, you got run off. By, well, not pin hookers, but, you know, the Johnson girl bringing stuff in from Florida.
They weren't, they never, let me correct on that, they never brought anything from Florida in. The one complaint we had, and we took care of it, they were bringing onions out of Georgia, they did that one time. There was no produce the girls were selling coming out of Florida, nothing.
I'll take your word for it, I just ain't never seen a watermelon cantaloupe.
They didn't have one, they have never sold watermelon. They've never sold watermelon and cantaloupe.
And I don't think we probably missed ten market days in all the years.
Anyway. Let's get back to this, so we need to know from y'all, for budget reasons. If, how much you want us to help you? I know what you're. We're wanting to do more. But we can't do more, not no one. I mean, you know, we'd like to buy a piece of land to put it on, that's got firm soil under it. We don't want to put things over in a swampy area and have to spend big money just to get a gravel lot.
Well, back to, back to that comment, Shannon. If that's going to be a developed park, and you are going to have a parking lot for your people to come in and park on, that's the parking lot we would want to use. You know, we would not expect in anything beyond what you would be having for, for the. Use of the park, and we would only use it that one morning a week, so then you've got all the other hours that it's open to the general public. So that's not really asking for a special parking lot.
Just to be clear, we've not, we've not committed to doing anything on that better farm road property.
Right.
Park wise, the park plan, any of that, yeah. So, once we do anything over there, we're going to pretty much commit ourselves to doing whatever's on that master plan for that piece of property.
Exactly.
And we're, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not convinced that we need to do that over there on that piece of property.
Not let us use the parking lot?
Not that, do what's on our master park plan. Once we do anything over there on that property, we're going to be, we're going to commit ourselves to fill filling out that park plan.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying? So, you know, and another thing. I know you're passionate about the farmer's market, and I'm, I'm all for the farmer. I'm not saying anything against it, it's just. You're, you've got to look at it from our side, too. You're, you're one nonprofit, and you're wanting us to fund a certain nonprofit. Each and every year. Open ended, without the town owning. What we're doing, what we're spending tax dollars for, and it's, it gives me some heartburn. What if, what if the next person comes along and they start their own nonprofit? And it's, they call it the Mills River Flea Market. You know, and they're just as passionate, and they have just as many people interested in it as the town, as you do as in the farmer's market. Where do we draw the line?
Well, back to the economics of it, our market is producer only. We're bringing in over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the community that stays in this community. And I, can I ask a question? I know y'all give Mark Williams and what's that group he's with, I know you write him a check every year, what's, that's never ending, what do you get out of that? Do you control that?
No, we do not control that.
Well, then, what's, what's the difference between something that isn't local, isn't bringing stuff, money into the community?
Well, let me, let me back up a minute, okay, let me, I'm all. Let's just say that plant that's just outside of town, the new greenhouses, would have been in the panel. It would have been a, basically a never ending revenue stream. And we would have got sales packs that was generated out of that building. From now on.
But it's not in the town, it wasn't in the town, it's already turned belly up and been sold, so.
But what I'm saying is, a lot of stuff that. You know, the businesses that he's helping try to bring here to create jobs. Yeah, we give him money, he tries to spend it the right way. I just want to make sure if we help you, and we want to help you, know that every, I think everybody here, as far as I know, wants to help y'all. We just want to make sure that we can. That the outside people paying taxes understand what we're spending this money for. And, because we got, you know, you had six hundred fifty, that's a lot of people, but there's eight thousand and roughly in Mills River. So we're just scratching the surface of that, hopefully one day we get to say twenty eight hundred go through there on Saturday, that would be awesome. But we're just needing to help Daniel with these, with these budget numbers, and I want to make sure when we leave here. Probably not tonight, but after May twenty sixth, we can help him develop what we're going to do with our product, so that number has a crease. Some of this will be able to use from ARPA funds, correct? Okay, sure.
Well, I was going to say that the funds that we requested for SNAP were from ARPA. And the funds for helping for an assistant manager or market manager, that they were asking from town budget. And I've not heard anybody say anything negative about the farmer's market. You know, and if if you have, that's fine, but I have talked to many people who said they will never play soccer. They will never play baseball and all that, but we still support that. And even though they don't never want to do it, they still support it. So I think that supporting the farmer's market would be the right thing to do, because the sense of community there. And the sense of the people growing stuff and influencing and encouraging younger people to look into farming. And the sense of the people growing stuff and influencing and encouraging younger people to look into farming. Is what this community is based on. And I think that the council members should be invited to come see the farmer's market. Come see for yourself what's there, because if you don't, you won't know. There was a lot of town employees showed up for there and they met people. And had a good time and said they met people that they hadn't seen in years. So there's a lot of people coming to the market and I think you really need to go there and see it before you judge it.
I think that, uh, it might help to take a step back from this and. What we're trying to get an answer to is, does the town want to pay for the operation of a nonprofit that provides something? To the benefit of, of the town? And everything I'm hearing is that yes, the town is supportive of supporting nonprofits if they benefit citizens of Mills River. And so the, the question becomes, do we want to, does the town want to pay for operation of that, of that nonprofit? Or does it want to support the operation of a nonprofit? And I think the distinction between groups like AHC or, or Penney County Partnership. In the market is that we contribute to those organizations, a very, very small fraction of their operating expenditures. Um, and what I'm seeing here is that the town is being asked to fund basically the entirety of the operation. Now, granted, that's not as much money as we paid, we offered to other agencies. But just based on what I'm hearing is the council, I think rightfully so, is concerned about basically operating a nonprofit. That it is not responsible for, does not manage. And so I understand both sides of the table. I think that your side from the farm market of. Being able to maintain the, the five oh one C three status and operate as you have been for a number of years very successfully. But from a, from a management point of view, I have to look at it and this is, I think the way council is looking at it as. We're giving funds to an organization over which we have little to no control. Not that you would ever do anything illegal and moral, anything like that. Just taking out the market as an entity and looking at it as a town paying for a nonprofit's operation. That's, that's I think where the discussion needs to be centered. I don't, I've not heard anyone say they're not supportive of the market. I don't think anyone in this room would say that they're, they're, they're not supportive of this market. The, the point that we need to try to get to as the council and us as management. Is if the town were to, uh, fund this. I think there would need to be some sort of agreement in place for performance measurement or metrics or something to that effect. That would help kind of keep both sides in, in the loop of what's going on. So I don't, I just don't want to get so narrow it down on it's, it's we're either for or against the market because I know that that's not the case. Everyone's for the market. It's, it's the operational aspect.
How much, how much we want that taken in and how much they want to give, give up.
Right.
Responsibility to. And that's why I asked them because it's, it's there.
Right.
You know, it's there.
And, and what I can tell you is that we have operated on a shoestring budget from the beginning. And that Joe and I have spent a lot of our own personal money at times for these things as well. We have operated on grant funding, but most grants don't pay for positions, staffing. They pay for programs or whatever, and they like to have new programs, not pay to continue ones that are in, in progress, which is always a. I, I don't understand that, that line of thinking, because if you've got a good program going, you need to keep that program going and, and you've got to come up with funding. Funding for that. Uh, some of the grant funding that we've had in the past has, has, uh, gone away and we're continuing to work on that. Sandra knows she's been sitting in on some of our discussions about that. Uh, we had part of a Duke endowment for a while that was operated through a helping people helping Carolinas with the party foundation. And that paid for our double snap for a while. It also paid for our kitchen coordinator. Um, we've never had a kids zone coordinator. That's something I would love to have because that's something I have to do. And I would love to have somebody else take over that for me. So that's why those positions were put in there. They're not necessary. The big necessary is the manager. Everything else we could possibly manage if we just got enough donations or.
Volunteers.
Volunteers or, or worked on some, some grant funding, but as far as a manager, that's, that's the big.
Yeah, we've reached the point, we need, somebody needs to be paid to do this.
Just make sure y'all reach out with Bill Moss and let him do an article about how that snap, matching snap works. So we can write it up. That'd be a great article for him and might get you some extra money from extra, uh, individuals too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. He might got anything else on this budget before we move on?
I just want to say a couple of comments. I appreciate town manager's comments about the farmer's market and. Discussion I had with the town manager many weeks ago was, I like to see this council partner with the farmer's market. And rather than budgeting overtime to have park staff go out there and serve the, the. Farmer's market, I'd much rather see us partner with them, provide them the financial resources they need to get the people they need to run it. I really don't like the co-mingling of staff, town staff. Serving as farmer's market employees. And that being said, I don't share the same heartburn that Councilman Austin has about the funding of this. I think we need to, to partner with them because, uh, Mills River is different in a sense, the way we support agriculture and it shouldn't be just platitudes. It should be, you know, putting our money where our mouth is. And it sounds to me that the farmer's market's read, reached a critical point where. It's been supported by efforts of a handful of people and it needs to take that next step. And I think we're that likely partner to help get them to next step. You know, if that means help develop a business plan where they can increase fees on vendors and expand their market. To where they can get revenues that would support a full-time manager, but in the interim. So that if lightning should strike the Britons, that it's not the end of our farmer's market. And, uh, I do believe it. Provides a valuable service, not only to our agriculture producers, but to our community in general, because it's a nutrition. Issue, it's a local market, it's fresh produce. It's, you know, there's a long laundry this, so that being said. I hope to see this council in their budget that's approved, uh, meet the needs, not only of. A part-time manager, but also of the double snap. And there's also a kids zone coordinator and, um. Kitchen coordinator. Uh, so it's getting closer to twenty five, thirty thousand dollars.
So you would, if we was working with the match, you'd be like, they were putting thirty, twenty five, thirty thousand.
Yeah, and while there's some consternation either amongst staff or council member about community. Engagement, I guess is the term we're using, but I can't think of a better use of taxpayer money than to pour it right back into the community. Which we're supposed to provide services for and enable these organizations to do things that we can't do as a town. So yes, I would be, uh, going to bat for the twenty seven, twenty nine thousand dollars that the farmer's market's looking for. And that's not open in a sense that the next step is to sunset our funding and have it be, uh. Supplanted by revenue generated by the market. Well, then we need to work with them on that plan to make them self-sufficient, but I just don't want to see it. End with somebody's efforts, individual efforts, because no one picks up the mantle and carries it. But also I don't want us to be the farmer's market either. I think we can partner with them. I think it's important to this community, this town and agriculture to make sure that stays viable and we help it grow.
So, did I hear you right, Mr. Young? Do you think the farmer's market could be self, self-sustaining dollar and cents much?
I don't know. Apparently there's, there could be missed opportunities by the farmer's market not having a more devoted employee, even just volunteers. They could search out funding options, additional ones besides ones they've gotten, but nonetheless, I would, you know. I understand, and also as a steward of public funds, an open-ended or a checkbook, you know, we can't write checks forever, but. Uh, by the same token, you know, I think we could also go in with agreement that. Whether it's reduced every year, you know, or transition, but I just. The way it's been explained to me and through our visioning and through the comments tonight is I just see this as an important juncture for the farmer's market. It's either gonna, you know, it's either gonna max out at the level of resources it has available to it now and, and decline possibly. Or it's a, a point to where it could really, uh, grow and transition these additional resources of people and funds. And I think we should be there to try to make it grow. And, uh, like I said, if, if we put forth a timeline or something like that. In conjunction with it, I'm fully supportive of that and to work through that, but. I just don't want to see us miss an opportunity to, a farmer's market that's shown continual growth and like I said, provides a number of. Services to this community, you know, not get the full support of this council at the time when they need it most.
And also there could be an opportunity with a little bit of help and a manager that they could look into sustaining grants to carry on in the future.
So. So I'm still hearing that the, what, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? If we support the farmer's market to the two, twenty five to thirty thousand dollars over, for how long before this farmer's market is self-sustaining?
Well, I don't pretend to know that answer tonight. I mean, I would think it'd be a matter of years, whether it's three years, five years, I don't know, but. I think it's a, unless I misjudge the community in which I live, I mean, it's supportive of agriculture and this is one part of it. And I think the kind of funds and the reputation the market has and being frugal and good storage with the funds that they have received through grants. As well as what they collect, uh, from vendors, uh, I see no reason why we shouldn't, uh, continue to. Or to work with them to try to continue the growth.
Right, I agree. I would love to see the farmer's market. I want them to do well. With everything I've got, uh, Daniel requesting a position here for a program. To the tune of about forty eight thousand dollars for salary. And before we could, I just don't see, I'd see this opportunity to start a program. Position with a ready-made program that they could step right into. Twenty hours a week through the summer and then we would still have programmer the rest of the year for, for just. Another twenty thousand.
And then that's where I dig my heels and say, I don't want town staff running the market. Town resources to go to the market, but I want the programmer to be strictly parks and rec, kind of directors. Supervision and even the overtime of park staff to move trailers or whatever it may be. I don't want to see that continue. I'd like to see. Divorcing those services and like I said, and, and replace it with. Supporting the farmer's market the way it needs to be supported. So we're not using overtime and budgeting overtime over here and then. Moving over to farmer's market and using it, those same resources.
I guess I just see it as a, as a, is it setting some, somewhat of a precedent? About supporting a nonprofit. Outside of town staff. It's, it's town money going to, to, to one particular nonprofit. And the next time. Another nonprofit comes around, different, different council, different manager, different staff. They may be at the same, because there's a precedence here.
Well, I think if it's something that serves agriculture and a community in the same, uh, same capacity of the farmer's market, then I hope the future councils do support it.
So if another one opened up next year, uh, another nonprofit, tailgate market opened up, gets supported at the same.
Well, I don't say in startup money. I don't think we have startup money with, with this farmer's market.
We did, we asked you that. He was totally opposed to it. We can ask you that. He said on that board with. But we did, we did find startup money, a hundred percent of it.
But I think it, like I said, as it comes to, uh, having outlets for agriculture products and us being a community, it's, uh, it's harder and harder. To say that with conviction if we're not doing everything we can for agriculture and this is one way.
Well, I can say that the six hundred and fifty people that they counted and they did not count them all. Um, that was a wonderful number and it was a big number. But the farmer's market has been steady with their numbers for the last ten, twelve years.
It's been, you mean shoppers?
Right, but.
It's continually.
Right, it has continually grown, but it's been steady. I mean, this coming weekend, they're calling for rain. I can't promise you what it's going to be.
What do, what do we, I mean, do we have rain for expansion? I mean, for vendors?
Well, that's what we're hoping for.
Or do you bring it, or I know you try to not get too many of the one carrot.
Yes, we do. We do try. At this point, with the number of, the traffic we have coming in. We do sort of limit, because if we had two or three of a certain item that is not high demand, then nobody's going to sell. And everybody's going to have a bad taste in their mouth. So we do have to, have to limit that. Uh, our footprint where we are right now, we can have about thirty five vendors on any given day. Um, that's one of the reasons that we were hoping that we could get, uh, a parking lot somewhere that we could use that would maybe give us some room to grow. Um, and also the big, the big deal is the moving of all these trailers. If we had some spot that was not like the school parking lot where we could leave a storage container or whatever, that would be extremely helpful.
So my goal would be to have you that spot. With maybe a fenced in area to back batting in or. You know, in a bathroom facility where we get away from the port job. Where people feel like they washed their hands and feel good about going back out there.
Well, well, the thing about, uh, if we ought to permanent facility, we wouldn't have tall trailer. You know, the kitchen, the kitchen we'd put up on blocks and it'd be there all the time. We'd just raise it and lower it when we needed it. And the other, all the other stuff that's on the other trailer would be.
The storage building.
Storage building. You know, that's, that's it. And. You know, as far as continued funding, the, the market we have, we've, Lyndon and I personally have gone and begged a lot. To get our double dollars program started and to keep it sustainable till we got the Duke grant, which we knew was a limited money and we're hoping to find. You know, we're hoping to find permanent, permanent financing for some of these things. Cause there's no way a market other than through donations or. You know, can come up with the kind of money we'd need for, for our double dollars. And the same is for a salary. You know, if you do our double dollars and the salary, we would have to be charging our vendors. It wouldn't be worth it while it comes to market. And, uh, you know, so that's all, it's always been one of our goals to keep our market very reasonably priced for the farm. For the producer, because as, as being one all these years, your margins ain't much and. You know, you've got to be, you've got to be careful with what you can spend. So, you know, our, now our grip, what we'd really like to see is like saying a permanent spot without having tall trailers. And a paid manager. If we had a good, a good enough manager. You know, we could start into doing more grants, doing more partnerships with businesses. You know, it's, it's something could open up. That eventually I would like, I would love to not ask the town, you know, I have to ask you for money. We went years and didn't have to. And finally reached the point we needed a little help. And, uh, y'all stood up a couple of times for us and we're hoping to, you know, hoping again. But I understand that being responsive, you know, not wanting to just keep throwing money at us. But with what we're producing, what we're giving back to the community, that's got to be worth a little bit of something. And like I say, if we got the right manager and people that know a lot more than I do about grant writing. And, you know, partnering with businesses, that is something, you know, I would love to see that grow.
They are still reaching out to people for donations, for running the market and donations for double snap. Um, Advent Health just recently made a, a nice large donation. And we greatly appreciate them and in return for that, they have the opportunity to come to the market. And do health stays, blood pressure checks, different things that they want to do and it helps them in the community too.
Is any of the tailgate markets that y'all aware of have a, like a cover charge for the customer coming in?
No.
That wouldn't work. That, that wouldn't work. People wouldn't, they wouldn't come.
I just know like if they go to the craft fair, they go anywhere, they pay to get the door.
Yeah, for, for, they'll pay to get crafts, they won't pay to get good fit.
Well, let's try to get moving on here. All right. Anybody got anything else for Daniel to look over before we move on? So what do we want to do on May twenty sixth? That'd be a, we, we probably can't come in early because I know I got one, a meeting that'll go to probably three thirty or later. Jeff's got something, uh.
I'm available next week if y'all would like to come in one day next week.
I can't do it Thursday.
So we, we can, I'm going off memory here, but I believe the agenda for the twenty sixth is, is pretty light and what's on there is not time sensitive. So we could dedicate your next meeting to just have the. So we could dedicate your next meeting to just have the budget on the agenda, but am I forgetting something? Oh yes, there are a couple of reappointments that are coming up, uh, which the council will need to consider.
Okay, so, but let's, let's seriously talk about this. Do we, do we feel like there's a lot of budget items on here? That we're gonna have to work through. I mean. I mean, I think the five of us will get through what we're gonna do for the farmer's market and Daniel pretty easy, honestly.
And there were several of the other nonprofits that came in that we need to discuss them too. They, they were all very good presentations and information and I think they all need to be looked at.
Oh, absolutely.
I can say two, three hours worth of discussion. Uh, so I think we need to have something. In addition to the twenty-sixth prior to.
Feel like there's gonna be quite a bit of discussion on a few of these capital projects, maybe some positions.
We gotta post this, correct? So. And we need set at least seven to hour. What, what does staff have about it? That's another good question.
I mean, we're, we're, we're pretty flexible.
I don't have my calendar, so I, I think I've got something Tuesday and something Thursday for the town. I've got the MPO, I know Thursday, I'm pretty sure that.
It is, the MPO is on Thursday and that training on for ethics is on Thursday. That's in the morning from ten to twelve. And then your MPO, I think is a.
What about this coming Monday?
I could do it at the evening. I've got a, I've got a meet to Talga in March, you know, first thing at eight o'clock and.
I can do Monday.
Where, I mean. Jeff and I are meeting in the morning about something unrelated to the, to the, somewhat related to the budget, but other than that, our, my calendar is free, I think. Are you guys available?
Yeah.
And we could do, we could do a different day. I just, I know that works for. A couple of us, but. So why don't, why don't we do, Sue, tell me if we can do this, but I'm gonna offer this. Why don't we, um. Continue with the discussion this evening and then tomorrow we'll send an email to everyone with a couple of dates and times. And then you respond directly to either me or Sue, whoever sends it. Don't reply all because that's official business. And once we get some, some options, we'll email them out. Does that work for everybody?
That, that can work because for a special call meeting is either the mayor or two council members to call it. So we don't have to vote up.
So, uh. Yeah, see, it's on Wednesday evening for it. Is it that week? Usually is.
Sorry, four o'clock Wednesday.
Uh, so keep all that stuff in mind.
I'll make it, I'll make it anytime as long as we do it sometime.
Would, would you like to, to let us know in the morning? What works for you and then we'll check, give us a couple of options and we'll check with everyone. And then whatever consensus we can come up with. And if anybody else can't do it sometime, let us know as soon as possible.
Okay. So are we done with this budget presentation?
That's, that's all I had for the presentation.
Anybody got any more questions for Dan? We're gonna save them for whenever we meet. We need to set this public here for this, uh. Budget.
Mr. Mayor, so we, we add this on the agenda, um, and the event council was ready to set the public hearing if. Since we're gonna be meeting again, I would suggest we wait to set that public hearing. I'd rather have you all comfortable. And ready to have that before we go ahead and set it.
Okay, so we're going up.
That, that's my recommendation. If you guys, you do what you want to do.
Well, we got, you know, we're set for June tonight, so we got plenty of time, so. As far as, we got one more meeting after that, correct?
In, in order to meet, um, the. Lightning schedule and us being able to advertise this ten days prior to the hearing. The nights won't work if you're, if you get as late as the twenty-sixth for a special meeting to be talking about this. We, we need, we need more time, but you could use the twenty-third for public hearing. So I tend to go with Daniel and. See how your next meeting goes. And then you can always set it that day, whichever.
But it has to be published for ten days, I think, right before the hearing.
At least. The statute doesn't speak to it, but recommendations are at least ten days prior in order to give people time to comment. And I'm supposed to have the copy in my office. And we try to publish it on the website prior to the hearing or when the notice goes in the paper. So you want to finalize document.
So. We simply just skip over that, right? Okay, so we're moving on to E ordinance twenty twenty-two oh eight budget amendment.
So I'll give the quick synopsis on this. Last month, we got all of the policies adopted for ARPA, council authorized the expenditure to the fire department. And now we need to make sure our books are up to date and we have to do that via a budget amendment. That's pretty much it.
Got you. So you need us to make a, make a motion to approve this special revenue fund.
Yep.
To the general fund. If somebody, uh, would understand and make that motion. It's just gonna be a special line item on the budget.
No, actually what this does is it, all of your funds for ARPA are in a special fund.
Okay.
And when you authorize that. Transaction, it, it was coming out of the funds already there. This essentially moves it. Into your budget and will increase your budget by that seventy-five thousand dollars. It's like taking it from savings and putting in your checking account.
Okay, with this, okay. Everybody understand what Sue just said? Somebody make the motion for that special revenue fund.
Mayor Gons.
Yes.
Move that we approve, uh. Amending the budget to transfer, uh, special, uh, fund revenues to the general fund.
Thank you, Jeff. I need a second. Thank you, James. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on to staff, uh, financial director.
Well, I've already brought this up. My, my, my plan was to combine, uh, Mayor Gons and council member. Young that they have ethics training on the twenty-sixth from ten to twelve. And that it is a requirement to get it within twelve months after you're appointed or elected.
I will just ask that you please give me a call even before, or my wife will make sure I'm here and I need to be here by.
It's online.
Oh, so we can do it at home.
You can do it at home if you want to. Um, yeah, and I know in the past we've run it for you, but. Technology has caught up. We're, each of you can watch it individually now.
Okay, good deal.
And I think I have a calendar reminder set up, but I'll call you.
And there'll be a link for me to still.
You, they, they usually send it out directly to you. I should get a copy, but they're not always good about sending me the copy.
Hell, when should I be looking for that? Just a few days before or weeks before?
No, no, just a couple of days before.
Anything else? Uh, text the way.
Um, just quickly, our collection percentage at the end of April was ninety-nine point zero six percent. We have. Somewhere around twenty-five thousand dollars, um, left to collect the next six weeks, seven weeks. And that's, that's really all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Awesome job. Parks and Rec.
Uh, just real quick, I think Daniel updated you mostly, um, your riverbank is done. The Hooper Lane, uh, the gravel, gravel parking lot is still closed due to the DOT bridge construction. Uh, they did remove the bridge this week, so the final step is to pave from the new road to our parking lot. So once that's done. Fingers crossed by Memorial Day, we can get our boaters back to, to the boat launch back there. And then the other big question, everybody's winter and sunshade's going up. So don't only pray for dry weather for our farmers, but pray that we have dry weather on Monday so our sunshades can go back up over the playground. So that's scheduled for Monday. But.
Is the trees holding up pretty good in this dry weather?
That last, rain last weekend did really well. As I said, we had a little help from our friends over at the fire department that came and helped us. Right now we have a little beaver scare, so they haven't gotten any new trees yet, but we're keeping a close eye on that situation. We also have a new river otter that has taken, uh, uh, home back by the boat launch. So if you're back there, it's been seeing lots of sightings, so it's pretty cool.
Zone administration.
Couple of updates. The board of adjustment met on Tuesday and heard two variant cases for setbacks in the Farm and Mills River. Both of those were approved. Um, the planning board obviously considered the rezoning, um, at their, uh, meeting earlier this month. Uh, but more importantly, I wanted to update the board that they did consider the first part of the discussion on density or decreasing density allowances for multi-family. Um, a couple of items to report back. Uh, there was general consensus. They were okay lowering it from four units an acre to three units an acre. Um, for multi-family projects. Um, we did look at how Hendersonville and Henderson County regulates density by zoning district. Whereas we reg- regulated townwide or by specific project. Um, so I'm gonna do some more research on that and. And provide more, uh, data to them to look at. And then we'll continue on with the other parts of the conversation about, um. The, the other topics council brought up.
Okay. Thank you. Town manager.
Couple of things. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to go through the information that we put together for the budget. I know it's a lot of information. And it's a little bit dense. Um, if you have found any typos of which I know there are many. Uh, please don't hesitate to provide those to me so I can get the final document polished and updated. Um, and then secondly, we have finalized a date for a board appreciation dinner. We did this back in two thousand nineteen and had a tremendous turnout, uh, but then of course the pandemic hits, we haven't done it for the last two years, but. On October the eighteenth, I believe, at six thirty PM over at the barn at Tall Oaks, uh, over there next to west. Kind of, kind of across from, from Rugby. Uh, they have a really nice venue, uh, the barn. And it'll be an opportunity to, uh. Recognize all the board and committee volunteers. So keep that on your calendar. We'll send out, save the dates in a couple of months, but just wanted to put that out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council call me.
I do have something I would like to bring up. Um, I believe Daniel has two videos that he can show. Cause I don't think y'all have seen them. This is one ninety-one, um, going from two eighty towards Asheville. And this was taken about two weeks ago when we had a rainstorm come through and it wasn't a hard rainstorm. But the water run out in the road is quite treacherous and cars can hydroplane. Um, I did go meet with DOT. I know Rusty was down here. And said that they were unaware of this and I know people that have complained on this for over ten years. I mean, this didn't just happen. And, um, I met with DOT today with the, um. Engineer out at the maintenance department, Keith Blazer and Greg Connor. He's the transportation supervisor. And they do have a plan in the works to help, um, rectify the situation. So that the water will go into the ditches rather than out onto the road. Um, I myself have been driving down through there and had cars pass me. And if I'm in my car, the water has gone completely over my car. In my truck, it just blinds the windshield to where you can't see. And I do feel like that it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. Because it's like this from the top of Mount Gillette Church Road all the way down to two eighty. When it rains and it don't have to be a hard rain.
Okay, uh, thank you for stepping up and getting DOT involved in that and getting that rectified.
Well, they, they said that they would either be out there this week or next week. What they're having, what the holdup form is. Is trying to secure a location to put the dirt that they clean out of the ditches.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
Uh, one thing, Mr. Mayor, and that was, um, I was critical in the past of other councils when they'd open a public meeting, go straight into a closed session. Especially if it didn't pertain to something they were taking up that evening, so. I would just ask that of this council when we're setting agenda. I understand that sometimes actually this council might take. Uh, may need the advice of the attorney right then, but otherwise I'm amenable to meeting. I mean, I understand we don't want to keep the attorney waiting for hours as we have these prolonged meetings, but nonetheless, I'm welcome to meet at other times. Or an hour or two before the meeting, have a special call meeting that we advertise and, and take care of that business or. Uh, do it remotely and advertise it. But anyway, I just want to be mindful of our audience when I come here that, uh, a lot of them, like me, don't see the agenda till it's put out. Just a few days for a meeting and if they don't have a look at it and see, they end up spending an hour just tweeting themselves and I just want to be mindful of that.
Yeah, we would, as a mayor, I'd ask if we're gonna do that. We have a, we start the meeting earlier. And because, you know, attorney rates. I also have the audience wait this early, you know, I think there'd be understanding that, uh, for taxpayers' money. So if you want, if, if councils in agreement with that, we would definitely need to do that. And would you need that in a form of a motion to set our agenda that way? If we was gonna have a closed session like we did the night on something that the attorney didn't obtain our regular agenda.
No, but if, 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 you know, often the closed session just pops up because somebody has questions for the attorney. So what we would need would be either the mayor or two council members to call the, the special meeting. For the closed session.
Okay.
So we. That, and that, that would be how you would do it. So the two, the two council members would have to agree on the date and time or the mayor would. Date and time and tell us.
Right, so. So are you thinking maybe like six o'clock, five thirty? Sure.
E- each one would probably have to be set individually. E- each one would probably have to be set individually because you're still working around the attorney's schedule. And that's one of the reasons that we're, these have been set where they are, but I mean, we have to see if she's available.
If I'm not, if I'm not wrong, the last one, we had, we was, it was, we was waiting on her to get back from somewhere and she come, it, it was later.
Um, tonight, we were waiting for her to come back from somewhere. She'd been traveling to Tennessee. Drove over and back today. The last one, she, she was here for this, for the meeting. You had your Jeffress Road townhouse hearing and she was, when she left, she hopped in the car. Her husband was waiting in the parking lot the whole time and they drove to Tennessee.
I have looked it up. There's like the school board and there's other, I think commissioners do do it where it's, is. They go ahead and just said it earlier, which I, I would be.
So as long as two council people or the mayor lets you know, is there a, a set amount of hours ahead of that or?
Well, we still have to advertise it, so we, we still need seventy-two is best. I think we might be able to get away, I think it might be forty-eight for a special meeting, but seventy-two is best because. If you tell us, then we have to get up with the attorney, see if the attorney's available and then get notify each one of you and the press individually.
And that's another thing to keep in mind, to get much earlier, about four thirty or five. Potentially, so let's keep that in mind too. But anyway, we can, we can try that and see how it works. We will try that. Much into the dark. Like you're any second.
Second.
Like Sandra, all in favor?